I'd like to call to order the September 25th meeting of the Sugarin Falls Board of Education. Mrs. Burden, would you please take the floor?
Mrs. Gar.
Here.
Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mrs. Bros.
Here.
Mr. Hander.
Here.
Mrs. O'Toole.
Here.
Please join me to stand and face the flag for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is one point in our meeting where we invite public comment. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to address the board? If there is, I have a few guidelines that I'd like to share. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on with the board reports. At this time, we share our board committee updates. If you could please provide a summary of your last meeting and what's pending at your next meeting, or just say no report if there's been no change since the last meeting. For the audit committee, Mrs. O'Toole.
We have a meeting planned for, I believe it's Thursday, October 10th at 4:30 p.m., right here in this room. And we'll be meeting.
That's during our long weekend, so it may just be you. I know I'm going out of town.
It's on a Thursday.
Yeah, we have Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday that we come.
Well, I don't.
And I checked with both Phil and I before she said.
And the auditors.
Are you able to make?
And the auditors.
Okay, that's great. The board policy committee, Mrs. Bros.
No, I've been.
The business advisory committee, Mr. Rankin.
No, I've been.
Capital planning, that's me. We, our next meeting is scheduled for November 13th at 6:30 p.m. in this room. This is a meeting where several pieces of work that have been happening in parallel will come together and culminate in the committee's recommendations for projects that we recommend the board undertake in the next five years for capital projects. We're going to review the facility projects that are recommended by the superintendent's Facility Master Planning Committee, and also alongside the maintenance projects that are in our PI budget and the five-year forecast, and try to bring that all together to choose the highest priority projects that are within our debt capacity and within our PI budget that we're going to be undertaking in the next five years, so it's an important meeting. The board finance and budget committee, Mr. Rankin.
We have an upcoming meeting on October 7th, and that's it.
Records retention, there's no report. Superintendent's report, at this point, I'll just turn the meeting over to Mr. Hunt.
Good evening, welcome. There's three reports this evening, and we're going to have a variety of presenters help us along the way. So, thank you to the administrative team who's here tonight. We're going to cover the results of the 18-19 state report card, talk at a pretty high level about the report card, and kind of talk through the various components of that. Certainly, it can be more dialogue-based, give questions along the way, feel free to interject and ask. Also, we're going to introduce the board to the district academic goals for this school year, and we'll talk to you a little bit about the process and how those evolved and where they came from, as well as giving you a general view of those goals going into this year. So, I think we're going to kick it off with Mrs. Quinn and Mrs. Banko, and we're going to start with the state local report card.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to unpack the report card, and Barb and Katie, do you want to come up too?
Sure.
Since you're part of.
We're the small group.
So Barb Semensky, our K-12 math coach, and KPL, our K-12 PLA coach, which is a brand-new position on the course.
Sorry, guys, you have to go for that.
They have been integral in not only the work last year, Barb, but also in unpacking the data and starting to dig in this year with Katie's position.
Okay, when we put the presentation together, we thought it was important to start with this slide because it really serves as a reminder of our vision, our mission, our values, our priorities, and all the work that we do, whether it's analyzing the report card or coming up with our district goals. We want to kind of keep this graphic in mind.
So, as you can see here, all of the testing that was during the 17-18 school year was still up and running for 18-19, so no change was there. And you can also see the report card component that we're going to walk through this evening.
So, for the current report card that we're reviewing, there were some changes that occurred. So, I just want to kind of point those out again at a high level, and then as we go through the presentation, we'll kind of explain the implication of those changes a little bit more in detail. Primarily, there were changes to the gap-closing component and the achievement component. For gap closing, there were some new subgroups that had to be reported, but the gap closure was not calculated for those subgroups. The size of the subgroups for which reporting was required dropped from a size of 25 down to 20, and will continue to decrease in the next two years, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. We now look at our English learner population as well, to make sure that they're hitting expected achievement levels under gap closing. Within the achievement component, there were two additional indicators, and of course, improvement, which looks at students who are doing retakes to make sure that they are improving when they retake those end-of-course exams, and then chronic absenteeism. Again, just to measure to make sure that students are in school and getting the instruction that they should be getting. State-awarded grades based on the components. The districts are required to report on all six components. There was a certain weighting. Here in Sugarin, we actually only report on five components because we're not required to report on the K3 literacy component. Katie and I are going to talk about that a little in a few more slides. So, basically, for five components, the weighting is slightly different. And when you do all that high math, that gives you your rating.
So, if you wanted to dive into not only the district data relative to all the different areas that we're talking about tonight, but also if you wanted to access the building reports, you could do so by accessing the shared live binder and then entering the TIGERS 2019 access key. There is no student-specific data in there, so it's not confidential information. It does include our item analysis information, which you'll hear us talking about throughout the evening, which really helps us to unpack the data from each of the tests students took as a grade level and kind of find our areas of strength and find our areas of weakness that we can work to improve for the next school year. Now, we're going to move into the achievement component, which is made up of the PI, the performance index, and the indicators. You remember from the previous report card going into last school year, we kind of had some strategies as to how we were going to address some of the identified challenges. One of those was formally accelerating our students that were in advanced math courses starting in fifth grade, that were really learning content that was above grade level, making sure that those students had access to tests that better matched the content that they were accessing, and allowing them to be reflected on a written acceleration plan and appreciated through a weighted test score. So, that helps our PI in that case, and it also makes sure that kids are being assessed on things that they're really learning. So, we went forward with that. We also continue to offer our gifted service through the cluster model in both math and reading in grades two and three, and we implemented the double block. We're going to hear about that a little bit.
So, we have in seventh and eighth grade a double block that is a group of kids that will have half the time in math and half the time in ELA, so they go back and forth. So, they get two days a week math, two days a week ELA, and usually Fridays are kind of whatever the group decides they need. In the high school, we have algebra extensions and geometry extensions, which is a second period of math for a small group of kids that we feel are most at risk and struggling with students, and they're in that double block every day. And just kind of one comment on that. Jen and I spent a lot of time last week putting together, trying to take a look at how effective some of this was, just by looking at how these kids that are in double blocks' scores are improving as the year went on. So, just kind of one of the things I wanted to mention is the kids that were in algebra extensions last year, 79% of them grew one or more performance band. So, they went from a one to a two, or a two to a three, or a three to a four or higher, and 16% of them grew two or more performance levels. So, just trying to take a look at that, I would definitely say that the work that's being done in there is really making a difference.
And so, if you remember, the double block model for ELA was kind of modeled after math, and so we're earlier in that process of gathering data. We also now have an ELA coach, so I would expect that this time next year, you'll be hearing very similar data relative to ELA.
I actually asked Leila to pull some of that data already, so that's why I have my iPad, because I don't want to get it wrong. She gave me a lot of numbers, and when I tried to memorize them, I just forget. So, she looked at the 20 kids who went into double block as seventh graders. Of those 20 kids, only five of them have passed their sixth-grade ELA tests, so only 25% of them. After seventh grade, 75% of them passed, so that's a huge improvement. So, it's 15 out of the 20 kids. Of that 20, the ones who passed, five of them grew more than two levels. So, that 25% of the ones who were then passing increased by two performance bands. So, based on the math data and the ELA data, we're seeing some good indicators that this model of, you know, extra time with instruction and targeted interventions is really making a difference in student achievement.
Do you see a difference in the students' day-to-day and their experience, too? I mean, I would imagine it's a lot less painful for them if they.
Well, and I would just say that, and one of the things that I feel like in our algebra extensions model that we looked at last year is really even spending some time in there, building relationships with the kids and working on growth mindset. So, not just the math, but the whole, kind of the whole package of having the kids want to be at school, having them have at least one adult that they have a relationship with, and then just the idea that as long as I work hard, I can get better. So, I think that's kind of a big piece of that that we've been trying to infuse also.
I feel, too, that we really have such a grasp on their needs, because I think in reading, it can be a little bit more ambiguous than math because of the way the standards are. So, I feel that when the kids are coming in, they're really so targeted as to what they need, and it gives them confidence.
The other thing I like about it is that it's an inclusive group of kids. So, it is students both who have identified disabilities as well as students who do not. And I like that we can provide that targeted intervention to a wide group of kids. I think it makes kids feel better knowing that I'm not the only one struggling with this, and that leads right into that growth mindset that I was talking about. Okay, so with all of that in mind, we wanted to kind of give you an indicator or indication of some of the trends that we've seen over the last couple of years. So, obviously, the last column shows our overall achievement grade of an A this year, which factors in that district PI. If you remember, PI, or performance index, is kind of a score that's derived from a weighting based on how many students we have performing at each performance band. The district indicators look at, well, there are 24 of them now. There are those two new ones that we mentioned, but they really look at our students needing that minimum proficiency level at every grade. The district gifted indicators and district inputs, we met those, and we're going to talk about those in the next couple of slides. And then that chronic absenteeism we mentioned already. The state basically sets a benchmark of 13%, 13.6% of the students. We want to make sure that they're not missing more than 10% of school year. Our rate is set at three, so we're well below that benchmark, which in essence, earned that score of an A.
Jeff, can you pause? Go back to you.
Yeah.
I think we should stop and celebrate this. This is a pretty big deal.
Yeah, it's great.
A lot of hard work went into this, and I want you to hear from the board that we recognize how much work went into this, and it's, I think sometimes we don't stop and celebrate successes like this, so congratulations to everybody.
Yeah, well, I would say the principals should congratulate their teachers, because these are new courses. So, they're having to kind of develop the curriculum, develop the model, refine the process, and so it's been, you know, a big deal for them, too.
Good job.
Bob said we can only celebrate for 24 hours.
Oh, really? Okay.
Oh, gosh.
We're like, all right, then 24 hours is over.
If you're trying, that's a good way to end, right?
We have a full year of celebration. So, again, all of the information that we're talking about at the district level is also available by building. And now, we're going to move into the gifted indicator and kind of unpack this. So, the gifted indicator has three parts, and it's either met or not met for each of those. It has the PI, which is calculated in a similar way to just the general PI. We met that. We have the progress of students with the gifted value added. We met that. And then the gifted inputs, we met that for the district as well. So, our gifted PI increased in comparison to the past two years. Our weighted test scores for our advanced math students helps tremendously with that, so good job, students. We also, you know, when we're looking at the gifted scores, we're matching gifted students who are identified in an area with the tests that they're taking. With students that have a cognitive gifted ID, it matches to all of the tests, but if they're only math identified, then it matches to their math tests and so forth. We must have a minimum of 10 test takers before there'd be a calculation in the PI. For value added, we met that with an A this year. We've continued to service students in grade two and three in the clusters and continued that service. I feel like we're continuing to stretch our gifted students, which is, you know, starting to really pay off with our value added. As far as our input scores, and we're going to unpack the inputs because they're a little bit confusing, and it's really important to understand them, especially as you look at our school report cards. But we did need it. We needed a minimum of 80 points. We had 81 points. It's getting a little too close for my comfort, so we're looking at all of the buildings and really seeing what we need to do to make sure we stay in a safe place. So, gifted input one has to do with identification of students, the percentage of students that are identified in the core content areas or cognitive ability. And gifted input two is service to those students that have those gifted IDs. Gifted input three has to do with students that are identified as gifted in the visual, performing arts, and/or creative thinking. We, as a district, do not make a huge attempt to identify students in the visual or performing arts because we have so many amazing programs that don't require a gifted ID. So, we have not gone to that extent. It's a lot of time in a student, for a student to put together something, to even go ahead and have a performance or have the work samples needed to be identified as gifted in those areas, and we don't really feel like it's worth it. Similarly, with creative thinking, the only reason why we really do full grade screening in grades two and grades four is because we're required by the state, as of, I think, last school year, to do those screenings. So, we tag it along with our COGET screening in grades two and four. We do not provide a service for those students that are identified with creative thinking ability. It is simply a completion of a very subjective checklist, and we're just really not sure what that service would look like, because we know creativity can foster itself in so many different ways. So, at this time, we're not servicing an handful of students that we have that have that ID. So, gifted, so gifted input four is service to those students. Gifted input five has to do with our economically disadvantaged gifted students, identifying students from that population, and then it's service to those economically disadvantaged gifted students for number six. Number seven has to do with our minority students that are identified as gifted, our percentage. And eight is service to those gifted minority students. So, here, what's circled is the points that you can see that we've earned in the district for each of the inputs. So, we've maxed out the percentages for identification as students as gifted in all of the grade level bands over here. You can see in K3 right here, service to gifted students, that's partially because we have service only in grades two and three, although we have very few kids that have IDs in K1 because we don't give blanket assessments to K1. Some of those students only have one gifted ID from one test, and in order to be in a cluster, we require there to be more than just a single data point. So, some of those kids, second grade is the first time that they've taken I Ready, and they get that gifted ID, you know, in the spring, and then there isn't another opportunity for them to get a second gifted ID or for there to be additional test data. But we have a solution to that that you'll hear about, to try to increase that a little bit. Down here, you can see we're getting zeros for the visual, performing arts, and creative thinking. Identification of disadvantaged students. You can see we're maxing out on the identification piece and pretty close on the service to those students. Here, you can see our minority gifted students, we're maxing out on the percentage identified, and down here, service to those we max out as well. What's interesting is that, remember the number 10, that there needs to be 10 students? That is not always possible, particularly at Gurnee and at the intermediate school, where we just might not have 10 students. So, ODE's response to that is just giving you a zero. So, for instance, if you had seven students that were minority students that were identified as gifted, and maybe you only have eight in the school, and you're servicing six of those seven, you would get a zero for service because you don't have 10 students. So, unfortunately, there's some things that we just can't control. So, you'll see that here. Some considerations, we're providing service to students in grades two and three with the math reading COG IDs. We also started using I Ready several two years ago, and I Ready has been added to the list for approved assessments for gifted identification starting in grade two. So, it's very helpful, but like I said before, we really just need to continue to try to gather additional data for students, so if they have a math ID that we're collecting additional data points quickly thereafter and placing those students in a cluster if it's appropriate. So, I pulled the data because we're kind of trying to monitor it closely this year. To date, this year in K3, we have 59 of our 79 students being served. Those 20 students, of those 20 students, one is a first grader, so 19 students just received a letter from me this week referring them for additional gifted testing with the hope that maybe that's another way they could pick up a second point and be eligible for cluster services. But again, there are some gifted inputs we can't control if we don't have certain subgroup populations within a school to identify students as gifted. We can't control that. So, in moving forward, thinking about our total district achievement, we've already started to address kind of our weak areas from the report card and kind of how it's guiding our work this school year. So, first, we really want to focus on sustaining and/or increasing our PI, not only our gifted PI, but also our district. We also want to examine specific grade levels, content areas in which achievement was low, and I think our coaches wanted to pop that out a little bit.
So, at Gurnee, we looked at I Ready data and the AR Data in third grade, but what we did is we identified the low areas, the lower areas in I Ready. Then we sat with each of the teams and teased out each of the standards, talked about best practices and instructional standards, about an instruction based on those standards, and then looked at the alignment, K3. So, that is really the primary focus of our TBT work right now at Gurnee. At the intermediate school, Barb and I have been doing a lot of work during the personalized learning time. We did have AR Data for that, so we looked at the item analysis. We took items that appeared to be problematic, meaning that about 40%, I'd say, we looked at about 40% non-passage rate. We developed lessons and coached teachers in developing lessons into really hitting those standards hard to start their PLT work this year in book reading and math. At the middle school, Leila and I are working with the ELA teachers for that whole double block and how that looks, really targeting specific areas of language arts weaknesses. And Monica and I are looking at that progression of the writing piece 310 because we're seeing sort of a, sort of a continuum of not hitting the highest point levels in the subcategories of the writing standard, so we're trying to look at that on a continuum. It's really interesting in this position, you can see the whole picture, and so things like that really jump out, that we have a lot of students on the 10th grade and, of course, not achieving fours in the subcategories, but we also don't have that in any grade with a 310, so we're working on that.
Hi, Pete, just a reminder, Jeff, thank you for creating this position.
Yes, thank you. I'm alive.
It's been incredibly helpful.
I've been loving this.
And I won't add much to that, other than just the item analysis and just looking at data and trying to pinpoint things and places that we can, that we can do as much as we can to help that achievement in math also.
Me, in the last few years, really took a complete look at the reading shows or writing at every grade level. Where, when did that start? Like, which group of students are benefiting? So, really, the work in writing, this is our year of K-12 PLA refinement. Gurnee has done a ton of work with writing, with the Lucy Hopkins infusion across K3, so that is a strong consideration as we're kind of reviewing our work and kind of seeing where we want to go forward. So, kind of feel like that's something that's really working well. We're hoping to build off of that.
And one of the things, too, that's been so helpful is it's a 3-5 band and a 6-8 band, so we're really trying to create more opportunities with teachers from those grade levels to come together, develop common language towards writing, because they're writing the same response in third, fourth, and fifth grade. So, by fifth grade, we should be nailing it, because it's the active standard. So, we're looking at that and how to catapult that into 6-8.
One of the other things that we've worked on, we started talking with teachers about it at the end of last school year and actually put it into place for this fall, was refining the gifted cluster group selection criteria, the data points that we used for placement, and really refining it, taking away some tests that we felt like were duplicating the data that we already had, and instead of requiring three points, requiring only two points for the math, and so then it kind of takes away all, one more hurdle for a student that was kind of preventing them from accessing a cluster right away. And we've kind of worked through that with second and third grade and worked through it with fourth grade to make sure that they felt comfortable that that was still going to appropriately identify students that would kind of be in a place preparing to enter advanced math for in fourth grade. So, so far, it's really been helpful in helping us to catch more kids and put them in clusters. We have done quite a bit of work with our math achievement. Barb, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, so, just a comment, and I know that you're probably already aware of this, but fifth and eighth grade math is always kind of a, it's got its own obstacles. And just to make sure everybody's aware of that, what happens in fifth and eighth grade is that there's a significantly lower amount of kids taking the fifth grade test because about half the grade level in fifth grade is taking the sixth grade test, and it is your better students. And then when we get to eighth grade, it's even a bigger issue because we've got all the kids taking algebra and geometry. So, there's really 30 to 40% of the kids typically that are taking the eighth grade math test. So, not to, not to give excuses, but to just kind of make people aware of that situation. And I think, in my mind, that means that I and the fifth and eighth grade teachers really just have to be a little more meticulous and really do everything we can to just try to pull kids along, which is, you know, why the double block is great. Fifth grade pit there, benchmark, I guess we wouldn't call it. They hit 80% last year, they didn't, and, but eighth grade didn't. So, that's the one that wasn't met, and we saw 23 out of 24 were met. So, we're just, you know, looking at that item analysis, like we've talked about, looking at I Ready scores, working with the double block students, and just making sure that we're doing everything we can.
So, the fourth grade students that are taking the class that the fifth grade test is on don't get counted in that because they're not in fifth grade?
So, they, the fourth grade is the beginning of kind of like our advanced class, and so the fourth grade math students take all the fourth grade math, and then they dip into fifth grade. So, they don't finish the fifth grade curriculum, so they don't take the fifth grade test. So, all the fourth grade kids are taking the fourth grade test. And then when you get to fifth grade, that half is taking the sixth grade. You have sixth graders who are taking the seventh grade, but you're being, I call it like covered. You're being covered by the fifth graders taking, if that makes sense.
But there's no third graders taking the fourth grade, covering the fourth grade?
No, all the fourth grade takes it. So, there's all the, the whole fourth grade class takes it. So, they, so they're, that, and I don't know that everybody's always aware of that. I think sometimes you see the report card, and you see fifth and eighth grade, and you're like, you know, what's going on? Why is that so significantly lower?
Yeah, and if you look at the number of students, I mean, right there, you can see.
Right, right, right.
And that's not true for language arts. If you're admitted, the fourth grader is taking advanced ELA, you're taking the fourth grade test. If you're a fifth grader that's taking advanced ELA, you're taking the fifth grade test.
Just because of the nature of math, we felt like there was only so much enrichment that you could add to an advanced course, so we wanted to accelerate the pace through which students are traveling through math. If you remember years ago, when I first joined the district, so maybe like seven years ago, Advanced Math Applications was the first advanced course in math in sixth grade. And the challenge was to try to sub sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math into a single year, preparing those kids to go into algebra in seventh grade, and that's a really tough thing to do. So, we felt like in kind of our collaboration, that if we could bring some up, and seventh and eighth grade has a nice fit together as far as the standards go, but if we could bring sixth grade down to fifth grade and kind of put some of the fifth grade down into fourth grade, it would make it more seamless and easier for students to work through.
So, this is one of those areas where the way the report card is set up doesn't align with the way we're educating our kids in Chagrin. And I think that it's great that you should be aware of what's happening and why the interplay is. But this is also an area where we like the way we have our math program set up and we're comfortable with it. Actually, it's benefiting the students that are not accelerating, because it is putting a little extra emphasis on us being sure that we're giving them the support to do the best they can.
All of our kids matter, and so it just puts increased focus on that we have a lot of work to do to make sure that they're meeting expectations and their expectations.
But I do think it is important that we all understand, so that when we have conversations with people, we can explain.
And that's true too, for looking at the district perspective, when we have the total number of students in algebra and looking at, and of course, it benefits us with the weighted scores. But then when we look at the high school, it really, there's very few students at the high school that are actually taking math and of course, exams, because we have so many kids taking it in middle school, so.
Right, so similar issues if you just looked at the high school report card at the algebra part.
So, maybe you're explaining different data than I'm just looking at this one on the math benchmark data? Like, that's completely different.
I'm not sure, I don't know what's.
The iReady.
The iReady.
Oh, right. iReady is our benchmark test that kids take three times a year.
But if you're looking, are you looking at eighth grade?
Seventh, actually, because you were saying fifth and eighth, but I'm asking about the seventh.
Similar idea, if you're looking at the algebra geometry kids didn't take the iReady in seventh and eighth grade, so if you're looking through that, and all of a sudden you get to seventh and eighth grade, and the red looks proportionally bigger, or the yellow, or the yellow. It could be because, again, the numbers are smaller, the algebra geometry kids didn't take the iReady.
iReady pops out at eighth grade content, that's why they don't take it.
So, similar reasons, although a little different situation.
The seventh graders taking algebra count as high school students?
They take the end of course exam.
Yeah, they don't, they don't count on the high school report card.
But the district report card and the middle school report card.
So, they count for the PI, but they don't count for them, of course.
No, they count for the end of course, and the end of course gives us, you know, contributes to the PI for the school and for the district, but it doesn't have anything to do with the high school PI, those students aren't calculated and they're.
Shows up.
At least they do it by building.
Right.
So, it shows up.
Their points go to the middle school, right?
So, it is, it's, you know, figuring out all the rules of the game and kind of, I mean, it is. It's just tough to keep up, and the numbers are changing from year to year and that kind of thing. Okay, so the progress component consists of several things. We met all of them with an A, the overall measure in reading and math for grades four through eight gifted students, the lowest 20% of achievement, and students with disabilities. And so, that was an incredible improvement, so we're a little excited about that.
Okay, I want to walk you through the gap closing component a little bit. Gap closing looks really at certain subsets within our population to make sure that they are meeting achievement standards. So, this talks about, if you want to go the next slide, Rebecca, different subgroups. So, the state defines the subgroups based on population size. So, previously, that population, that magic number had been 25. So, if you had 25 students in a certain subgroup, you had to populate gap closing. Last year, it dropped to 20. So, with that criteria, we get five subgroups that used to be listed. Over the next two years, it drops from 20 down to 15. So, there may be other subgroups that all of a sudden now we're having to report gap closing on, which is okay, it's good, because really, those are the vulnerable populations that we want to make sure are meeting those achievement benchmarks.
And it's possible for one student to be in several subgroups, for those two to count more than once as well.
Right, so then we had, you know, their scores are double or triple counted. Okay, so this year, we did really well, because we maxed out on our points for every subgroup, both for ELA and for math. Graduation, you'll see there's only 300 points available. That's because we're really only looking at three of those five subgroups, because it is specific to the class of 2017 and 2018. So, it's really how many, what is your N size or your population size just in that 355 kids? So, we only hit three subgroups. But this is improvement over previous years too. And again, I think it speaks to everything we've talked about so far, just kind of with our ability to target certain populations that we know maybe struggling to hit achievement benchmarks. Again, you can find building by building gap closing in your live binder.
The gap closing and the progress are the two areas where, three years ago, yeah, we were, I mean, that is tremendous growth, and that you should really be incredibly proud of. I mean, I think that's where these students are getting better educated, and that's really worth applauding.
Okay, graduation rate, I guess, kind of tricky to understand, because we're looking at a four-year and five-year graduation rate. So, we need, for this report card, you're considering the class of 2017 and the class of 2018. So, basically, they want to know of those classes, how many of the class of 2018 graduated in four years? And of 17, which ones took five years? So, you can see the last column on the right, we are at a 95.6% graduation rate for the class of 2018 and 99.4. So, the question might be, okay, why are we a little lower? So, I just want to point out that our students with disabilities, while they may meet, they may meet their graduation requirements, they stay within our service, they're eligible to receive their special education service until their 22nd birthday. So, even though they have finished their high school course requirements, they are still one of our students until that 22nd birthday, so we actually don't get to count them as a graduate. So, that class of 2018, there's a big cohort of students within that group that are still remaining within our service population. So, that's why that number seems a little bit lower. K3 literacy.
So, this standard is actually not reported on the report card. And the reason it's not reported on the report card is because you have to have more than 5% of your kindergarten population identified as not on track, and we don't have that in Chagrin. But I think it's important to note that it deals with all struggling readers, and we do have struggling readers, of course, and tracking their progress through iReady and different benchmarkings to make sure they are on track, evaluating them during benchmarking time. And students that appear not on track will be placed on a RIN, which is a written, written?
Reading.
Ah, reading, yes, because that starts with an R.
Reading.
Intervention point and monitoring plan. So, students receive those, and the programming that they receive to become, to get them hopefully up on track, is outlined in that plan. We have one at home, I was going to make copies and bring me one, so if you want one, just let me know. I'd be happy to share it with you. And also too, we have to watch too with our third graders because of the reading guarantee. If they don't meet the reading guarantee, they, and they're not on a RIN, that's how we could receive a deduction from the state. So, that's what we have to have them really close to.
And the final component to review is the prepared for success. So, this component really is looking at are our graduates ready for college and career? So, it looks at kind of some benchmarks, and it awards us points based on the achievement of our students. So, again, we're looking at that class of 2017 and 2018, so total population, 355 kids. We are awarded one point for any student that hits a remediation free score on the ACT or SAT, earns an honors diploma, or earns an industry-recognized credential. Then you get bonus points. So, if you meet row one, but you also have a three-year higher on an AP course or earn three college credits while you're in high school, or take an IB exam for those districts that offer that option, you get an extra third of a bonus point. So, again, when they do all the high-level math, we earned 337 of the 355 available points, giving us an overall score of an A.
For students?
Yeah, so this is the area to know that I think as the state continues to focus on college and career readiness, we're going to see different ways to earn more points in this area, because it's just at the state level, more and more emphasis on, you know, making sure our students have the skills necessary when they graduate.
What kinds of things with that base?
So, the state is looking at offering honors diplomas in multiple areas. So, I think it's six months, six new honors diplomas, things like a career tech honors diploma, a visual arts honors diploma, whereby you'll get a bonus point or a point for students who have met that honors diploma level too.
I think you heard about the seal of iLiteracy too last year.
Some of those seals.
There's an example of that, yeah.
That's all coming out with the new graduation requirements, which, as you know, are different. Right now, for our current high school population, we're working under three sets of graduation requirements, so.
And I'm just going to offer up my caution again, that I think we need to be thoughtful in how we talk about those things with our students, because they already challenge themselves to a tremendous extent. And I don't think those seals were intended for us to now, our students now, I think they need to have 16 seals on them. But the kind of student that we might have in Chagrin, so balancing the benefit that, when you give us the district with what's really in the best interest of the students is going to be important as we move forward into that.
I don't think the intent of this field would create more work. The reality is that when we sit down to define these seals globally, it's going to be a lot of, and we already have a place that kind of fits into these criteria. I think the effort from the state level was to try to acknowledge there's more to the education and development of child, especially towards graduation, than just the academic components. So, like, you know, we haven't started that work, but as we have those conversations, like, a lot of it's going to be what we're already in place, but you know, define those seals.
I mean, I think the intent is in the right place, they're just a little concerned about unintended consequences, so I keep speaking to that, just to put it on everyone's radar.
Any more questions?
My daughter's thinking about becoming a teacher, and I think I'd better have her take statistics. Thank you, I mean, I'm so impressed, you were so well-prepared. You obviously know this content inside and out, and I know where we're headed next is how this informs what we want to do better and how we can all improve, you know, within the district. Not that we're trying to just make the numbers, but how can we use those numbers to really make us better at what we're doing with our kids, so. Thank you for the time you spend really digging into it and understanding it. I think I only understand like this much of it, the tip of the iceberg, but every time I hear it, it helps a lot.
But we also do realize that there are things outside of the control of everybody here, and because you're the number one in the school this year, and if you're not next year, that doesn't mean we're not doing the right things. You can't always, you can't always be at the top. You've got to, you've got to go down and up and take care of the kids.
Yeah, as a core, you do what you know you need to do, and teach them.
Right.
And then you hope that this is all reflected, and the state has figured out how to reflect that, and obviously, that's not always the case, but we know that you guys have, your hearts in the right place, and.
Just wanted to comment on the people sitting in the seats, and then, you know, all the folks that kind of are behind them. You know, these four got to stand up and share the results this year. It's nice to know the work that's happened over the last four or five years, the hours put in, and turn with data teams, and different models that we've, you know, talked about and implemented intervention-wise to see if kind of the handle's all to play itself out in the report card. But please know that, you know, and I know you appreciate this, this is a tremendous amount of work at the teaching level, at the building level, to make this, you know, possible, to go in from 103.2 in three years to 109. It is a pretty tremendous improvement. If I had time in my life, I'd look at, you know, who has gone, you know, that far in that amount of time, and I would imagine that this would be very short. I do caution you, you know, these subgroups, as they come into play are things that we're going to watch, and maybe, you know, that identifies as an issue for the district as we move forward. The other thing with graduation requirements, one of the things that was advocated for was reduction in testing. One of the things that was thrown out there with 23 is the removal of the geometry test in ELA one. So, if that comes to fruition, now you've got tests that are gone, tests that we perform traditionally very well at, and that will be something we want to talk to everyone about. There's a downside to limiting testing for the report card at some point. But I want to echo what, you know, Mr. Barbie said, the amount of work and dedication of our teaching staff, our administrators, is very much appreciated, and I think tonight is an opportunity to celebrate and take a deep breath and give it at least 12 more hours before we can jump back into it.
We'll give it to the end of the week.
So, we're going to transition into goals and look at kind of our academic focuses of the year. As the board is aware, we had some transition internally that has pushed this back a little bit. I will tell you that most of these goals were kind of created and came out of administrative retreat and working with data, as we saw, we also get a preliminary view of that data. And also, there's, you know, initiatives that we're carrying on, the multi-year initiatives, and we'll see some of that in these goals. So, all we presented are kind of labeled as district academic goals, but each building has a partner, and they have nuances that maybe are specific to an elementary or look a little different from high school, but everyone in here, each building, is responsible for a piece of these, there are certain individuals that are kind of taking lead and running with them. But they're goals that kind of apply, you know, PK 12 across the floor. And kind of actually, as you go through that, you'll see some of that. The other piece is that we have included, some of the buildings have specific areas that they're focusing on that they wanted to bring to attention, you know, myself, as we kind of go through the evaluation cycles of report education. So, although that's not shared tonight, our directors and principals have goals that are there for you to review as well. And certainly, you can ask any questions about those tonight, or if you get some time to review it next week or so, you can reach out to me. So, we're going to walk through this, and again, just interject, you ask questions as we go. So, before you start, you say, it says district goals, you said district academic goals.
Yeah.
So, for my own benefit, to set the scope there correctly, is it, so these are the district academic goals? Or is it the district, it's, you know, whether we're at the business of educating children, I don't think you'd call it a business, but you know, there are other elements too. Should I look at this for academic? I would use a lens of academic achievement, and what's being presented here. We're going to have some dialogue after these on the financial front, but these are strictly academic, social, you know, development, kids, these things in that realm as well, in these goals. But it's not the business side of what we do, that would be kind of more the financial side of the conversation. Obviously, everything we do aligns with mission and vision. One of our goals this year is kind of centered around that work, and we'll talk through that a little bit as we go. So, I know we're going to talk as a board of education on the things that kind of you value, we value as academic achievement indicator.
Yeah, and obviously, we have taxpayers that only have so deep a pocket. So, part of this is being driven by making sure we have our eye on that, that we are being as efficient as we can with taxpayer money, and our enrollment has been dropping. And so, that affects this ratio, even though sometimes it's not fair, because you have sort of overhead. So, with your expertise and knowing coming into the new job, what would you think would be a fair goal to have to meet the board's expectation for some sort of?
I think, I think maintaining our ratio of instruction versus non-instruction, I think is fair. I think our ratio is, you know, we're slightly below state, we're, you know, we're doing great. Obviously, we can't eliminate operations, it takes, you know, it takes that too. But I think that trying to maintain where we're at, or maybe even improving upon that a little bit, does achieve. does achieve the, look, if we reduce costs, we're not going to reduce it from the classroom. And maintaining that ratio makes it so that we can't. I mean, we can't remove things from the classroom. Otherwise, that's, that ratio's going to change. And that is reported by the state.
And sorry, where did you say we were relative to?
Our classroom is 68. something, and I think the state's is just below 68. We're better, slightly.
We might need some education in that.
Yeah, I put together, actually, I put that in the next newsletter. You'll see some graphics from, that the state put together. And those are important. But the cost per pupil is a conversation too that is, the state has created this confusion because they have a cost per pupil that they put on the report card. And everybody looks at this report card. Then the comp report comes out, and it's a completely different number. And I'll be honest, when I go to look at, when I went to look at our state report or the report card, I can't come to this per pupil thing presented. Can't. I don't know how they got it. Because there's so much, they don't just take our ADM or our enrollment. They don't take funded ADM. You know, all these numbers that we have on our report from the state every two weeks, I mean, those are solid numbers. They use a weighted ADM. So certain categories of special education get a different weight in our ADM that is used to calculate the cost per pupil. They include certain functions, they exclude certain functions. I mean, it's not just that, here's what you spent, here's how many kids you got. Whereas the comp report is a little bit more direct. So.
What would we show in a levy campaign, for example?
To be honest? Whichever one, I mean, they're both. They're both increasing. I mean, no, I'm not going to lie. But there's no way you can stop that. I mean, we can't tell our educators who.
No, they're going to grow. We could slow the growth.
Yes.
But how do we slow the growth? We have to, we have to then back out our transfer to permanent improvements. If we used to, you know, spend $450,000 and now we're doing a million and a half. I mean, look what that, that's a huge swing to our cost per pupil that the board has directed. So, I mean, all those, you can't just say, you got to look at that number and say.
Well, we set that as a priority. We set.
Right, and I'm saying, you can't say, so we're going to say, you're going to say the treasurer's cost per pupil went up too much.
It was artificially lower before because we weren't maintaining, you know.
Well, but, no, that was part, that was part of the thing. It's like, oh my God, we keep the cost per pupil now.
I mean, there are, I'm not saying that there are not places where we can't reduce because I, there are, I mean, certainly, I've seen some things coming through with some requisitions that it's, you know, we kind of question. And, you know, with the new system, it's really easy to send them back. And I think people are getting a little bit more pushback on expenditures than they had before.
There's, my question is a greater level of oversight.
Well, I loved your.
Kind of sending things back all the time now.
Yeah, I know.
Discussion on Amazon. I mean, people think, oh, Amazon's cheaper. But not when you spend hours and hours trying to reconcile and all that.
So, you know, I think it's not just, I mean, certainly, there are some places where we've already identified we want to look and do some assessments and do some analysis and figure it out. But because the data in the past, it's all based on account codes. And I will tell you that, and I'm a stickler for this, and I know not every treasurer is as focused on the account codes as I am. I, you know, had the same thing the last two districts prior to here. I'm constantly changing account codes and fixing account codes. And people are sending me things in requisitions and they've always used this account and I'm changing it. So it's going to, it's going to make, you know, the landscape change a little bit. So comparing this year's data to next year's data is already going to look a little bit different without even changing any of our planning habits, just changing, you know, the reporting of it. And, you know, getting somebody in here now who's doing EMIS full-time changes it for us in a positive way. I mean, because now we know that that data is correct and it's, you know, she's fixing the errors when they occur. And all of those things that go into this and all of these calculations and these comparisons that the state did, you know, puts together. I get emails from all the treasurers of the state because, you know, we're all in the same email chain. And someone will ask a question about why they're coding something, the exact same expenditure, and they'll get five different answers. You know, so it's really, even the comparisons that we're saying we want to rank here or we want to be here. Somebody could just code something differently and then next year, they shoot up, you know, two spaces or something like that, just because of the coding. So getting all of that to a consistent basis is going to change the way some things look too. So, I mean, I'm more than happy to put lists together. I think that's a really a smart direction. I think, you know, Bob and I kind of were already headed that way before this document even existed. Certainly, there's some areas that we can look at and we will and do some analysis. When I start digging into the numbers that are in forecasts a little bit in more detail too, I think that'll, that might flesh out some areas that we want to look at.
Yeah, what I'm, like, I feel like, I think, sure, people are taxed at an awful high rate, but they're willing to do it because we have an excellent school district. So my biggest worry, if we stop becoming an excellent school district, we're going to start having problems.
Absolutely. And I will say, changing the conversation on that matters too because everybody knows the full loaded rate and ours is higher. But because our property values are so strong, household 920 kills us. So our effective rate is not higher than our neighbors'. I mean, it's not when you compare it to some of these districts.
And that's why we want the goals to be together because we want to stay strong academically, but also just make sure.
I didn't finish. So I guess what I'm looking for is the exercise of generating that list is if we needed to cut costs, this is how we would do it. And then this is what we would have. To me, that would be what I'm looking for in this exercise. I'm not looking for, we're actually going to build this for the exercise of going through it. This is how we would have to do it and the order in which we would do it.
Well, I would hope that we would identify some things that are, I mean, to your point, we do have some that are, right? Some things that are not the, if we have to because we failed to levy, but more proactively, we should consider these things.
Some of that simply comes from a budget process. But some of that, you know, we, in the past, it's been roll forward. Five percent roll forward, not bottom-up, you know. And I think our ability to work together on that was going to cease to save.
I think just having the history of their expenditures too will help with that budgeting. Because now, you know, it's not just, well, I spent $10,000 on the sign last year, so now I want $10,000 this year. It's, here's what I spent it on. And they'll be able to see that, you know. The detail and the information at their fingertips is, they don't have to come to me, not that I have an issue if they did. But I think people, when they have the data themselves, are a little bit more knowledgeable of it than when they have to go to the treasurer's. So I think budget process next year is going to look different. I'd do it a little bit different.
So take credit for it. Put it in the plan as something you are going to do to improve our ability to meet our budgets. And that's kind of what we're, you know, stuff that you already know you do.
Right.
Put it in here. And the only, so I think we're very much on the same page. There's some tweaks to this and we may change what the measures are after we have these discussions. The only thing I would say is that it's married with the academical, that you have to achieve both to achieve.
Absolutely.
Either. Does that make sense?
Has anybody taken a look at the tabs that the state put together for the higher report card on the financial portion of it?
I have before.
Okay, because they actually do give us some really good kind of return on investment, you know. And that is what I kind of put together just in a one sheet for Charlotte before the newsletter. And it does, you know, it answers some questions for us. How, you know, where's our money coming from? What are we spending our money on? And what kind of return on investment are we getting for that? And it compares us to the whole state and has quadrants and, you know, shows that we are above the top expenditures, certainly. But we are at the top academically. So, you know, we are getting, it's.
It's a scatter, right?
Yeah.
There are districts that spend less and get better results. There are a few.
Two and three.
Go with it. I don't know if I saw these years. I think I saw last year.
And what is their, and what is their tax base?
It's just, it's always, it's just, it's always going to be this tug and pull.
Actually, what is all of this not? But again, when you're talking about those kinds of things, you have to think about the economies of scale that a district is getting. You know, we're just not getting there. And we're not going to. And we don't want to. You know, we like our district the way it is.
So we'll work off of this and get something back to the board.
Yeah, I just, somehow, they need to be put together, the academic. Whether you want to say this is 1A and 1B, I just think that that's really important, that they always stay together, that the academic goals with the financial goals, so that.
So are we talking district goal or our performance goals?
Well, the.
I mean, I guess it's my, I don't really.
Right, I know.
What document are we putting it in?
I know, exactly. Well, the district goal, I think, is your performance goal for academic, right? So I think it's the same thing.
Okay, so we'll put it in those documents. And then, yeah, I know, and fill them in to be together and talk about my, my goals. Which may, maybe we tease some of those specific items out in my own personal.
Right. Do we typically have performance goals? It seems like just, your goals have become district goals. Have we had separate performance goals that weren't district goals? I can't remember in my recollection that we have.
No.
So this probably is going to become a district goal married with the academic, with academic achievement. I'm really glad you guys wanted to talk about this because I think it's really important to get on the same page and, you know, get all these questions answered. It is new and, as you said, we're going to be talking more depth about what matters to us as far as our measure. That's an area of board governance that we want to have that conversation. What do we want to look at? What do we value? And I also want to, you know, commend you for not taking an example and saying I have to, you know, copy this example because we really want to trust you that if we just say, here's the high-level goal, it's maybe too high and maybe frustratingly high, you know, academic achievement and cost savings. But then you know best how to implement that. We trust you that you know how to write a plan that would achieve that goal. My computer went to sleep.
I have to load my report.
Thank you. I wish I could get into my computer. I might have to look at Mr. Garby.
It says A through G.
Can I have a motion for consent agenda items? What was it, 6A?
6A.
6A through 6G?
So moved.
And second?
Second. I would just draw your attention to F and B, which is the mental health provider. And if you have any support specialists, kind of help back on any communication with the broader community on this as we've been working to kind of solidify these contracts and the transition to help. But both of those positions are on board. And also a reminder, we have wellness money coming from the state of high level also the cost of these.
And they're not becoming full-time employees. That's a contracted service.
That's correct.
Could I ask a question of, oh, item A. One of the aides, did we not get a resignation letter? So is this for, or did she resign and now she's going to sub?
I think it must have been on there before the resignation letter.
Okay, because I think she's, the resignation letter's like in October, early October.
Although she may want to stay on this.
That's when I think that maybe she's going to sub.
Yeah, we've not changed that approval, especially in helping transition if it goes beyond what she can stay.
Who knows, there could be two people with the same name too.
Let me have a discussion. Mrs. Bruden, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Garby.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Kansiger.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole.
Yes.
Can I have a motion for treasurer's recommendation 7A through 17E?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Maybe by Mrs. O'Toole, second maybe by Mr. Rankin. Mrs. Bruden, would you walk us through these?
Absolutely. Item A is our health insurance renewal. We have a 0% rate change for the medical coverage, which is fantastic. A 4.5% decrease, that is not an increase, that's a decrease on the dental. And then for the vision, we have a 0% rate change for, through the end of this calendar year. And then starting in January, it's a half a percent increase. And that is through 2023. The other two, I should have mentioned when I started this, medical, mutual, our coverage is going to be for, this rate is going to be for 15 months rather than 12. And that is to get us on a calendar year with our coverage. So rather than going with a plan year that starts in October, it'll start in January now. For a few reasons, it helps with our planning. It helps our employees when they're looking at their deductible because no matter what your plan year is, your deductible's on a calendar year. And then if we start to make any changes in the future or if we wanted to look at shopping things out, it's just a January 1 renewal date, it's just easier. So we're just getting that one done. Item B, then announced certificates. We have just one, it was an American Express charge for the workers' compensation. That one is on my department. That was just, workers' comp in many places is an annual expenditure rather than a monthly going forward. Next year, you'll see when you're looking at a report and comparing a monthly expenditure to a previous year, you're going to say, well, this is Chinese expenditure because it will be paid on an annual basis rather than, we do get a discount if we pay the whole thing. And, you know, some districts where they have a cash flow issue where they can't pay the whole thing, monthly makes sense. We do not have that problem currently, so it makes more sense to us to take that discount to make that payment. But this was just, I personally dropped the ball and did not do personal or anything. So that isn't on that one. Item C is an equipment disposal. This is at the high school, the list is attached there. Item D is donations. For both for Tiger Park, we had $20 from Stan Arankar and $20 from Sandy Sigler.
Any other discussion?
I would just like to commend Mrs. Bruden. I've had the conversation for years about trying to move to a January. And it gets helped so much with our employee engagement, with the thoughtful planning. So it's a huge win for 0% for mental health standards. 15 months really helps overall.
I've got an awful lot to do.
Just take credit.
Thank you.
Next year, we could.
You guys did a great job of educating the staff and, you know, they certainly did their part in getting that 0% renewal because changing behavior reduces our claims and we get the favorable renewals.
All right, Mrs. Bruden, would you take the role?
Mrs. Garby.
I have a final question.
Oh, sorry.
Should I vote for the, for the, I'm on, I use the, uh,
Health Insurance.
Should I vote on it?
Um, I don't believe you had any influence on the contract, so I think you're okay.
I, I believe you're fine.
Okay. Yeah. Mrs. Garvey.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Kansiger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Do we have any other business?
I would just ask the board to go all the way to the top of their agenda on their computer real quick. And you should see a new tab called Discussions. If you click on Discussions, this is going to hopefully save us some time of board prep. I will utilize this tab to type in comments about agenda items that you may need a little additional background information. So if you kind of scroll down there, I just put a few samples in, like item C, student achievement benchmark data. I kind of typed it over there. So as you're kind of prepping for board meetings now, you'll be able to enter into the board, click on Discussion, and there'll be some more background. Um, also, if you wanna say, that's not enough, or give me, you know, give me some more information, or, you know, you can do that. We certainly don't want to be weighing in or voting or anything like that, but, um, anything in terms of information you may need from my end, just let me know.
So we can, we can reply?
You can.
And then they send, and you're gonna, should we then send your email, or no, you'll?
I, I believe I'll see it, I'll just check it, um, you know, maybe Fridays. The goal would be to put this out, and we normally do board prep, so Wednesday, Thursday, I'll try to send the notification, there's an agenda in there, and there's notes in there.
I think at the bottom, if there's something unread, it shows a little, um, like number with, uh, sort of showing you how many things.
I have seven live discussions right now. I don't know how long.
So bear with me.
Yeah.
But, uh, hopefully this will help efficiency and certainly constantly trying to reschedule or schedule board prep meetings, as it may be a nice, really good example.
Yeah.
I just sent you a comment on six A, it was asked, okay, so please get it.
This also, uh, I think does a nice job of looping in the whole board, um, the background behind the agenda, and not just having the board president have access to that information, and then having to convey to everybody, or decide what's important to everybody else. So it really gives you a closer relationship, I think, with what's on a board agenda, and the ability to ask questions directly. Um, and thank you Bob for, we, we actually tried to call it not discussion, because it really is not for discussion, it's really just to communicate that you need more information or something like that, so we're not gonna start deliberating on our agendas. So thanks for doing that, that helps a lot, I think, for, with transparency with the whole board. Is there any other other business?
Um, just that it's, uh, food service.
Birthday day.
It is appreciation day, and so we do appreciate our food service department.
All right, well, our next meeting is a special meeting on Wednesday, October 2nd, at 4:30 in this room. Uh, that is the agenda that we were talking about, um, what measures of student achievement do we feel are valuable as a district? That should be a one-hour meeting we're hoping, because we have other things. And then we have a regular meeting on Wednesday, October 16th, at 6 o'clock, that will be in the intermediate school cafeteria. Um, I think there'll be lots of photo ops at that meeting, so. May I have a motion to return?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Move by Mr. Rankin, second, and move by Mr. Kansiger, and Mrs. Bruden, please take the role.
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mrs. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Kansiger?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Okay. For the October 16th meeting, someone in mind needs that in my hands.
This is the first I noticed it.
Yeah.
We're gonna talk a little bit more on, maybe some data here tonight, as we go. So, um, in, in the need to kind of identify a goal and, and put a target out there, um, and we should have opened a conversation about this, we've, we've worked with the board's team, and we've talked about, okay, where do we wanna go? Is this a constant, is this a constant climb trying to improve that number, the, you know, the achievement number, the PI number? Um, or is it a, achieve a balance and a level of performance that's consistent? So you'll see from a performance and academic achievement goal perspective, uh, the goal is that we will achieve a, a letter grade of A on the achievement component of the report card. If you want a number around that, and so a way, that's something we strive to get to, and, you know, eventually we got there. Um, the other piece of this that is different than in past years, and built a little bit off of some of our results, is getting all of the indicators on the report card. So those are the two databases, um, that we've identified, um, that hopefully our work this year kind of leads to that as an help, um, for our measurement.
Is, is one A baseline of an A?
One A is a B.
One oh seven, nine, nine, nine.
Yeah, one A would be a B. Yeah. And just to give you scope on that, um, I think that would push you around number seven in the state of Ohio. I know we've had various conversations at the board level of, we shooting for number one, we trying, where, where's our band, if we've talked about being kind of in that top tier of 10? And I think one A would remain and keep us there. And again, if we improved on one oh nine point two, you know, that, that along the way, that'd be okay. Uh, but I don't think it's the be all and end all of everything we're trying to do academically. So I'm gonna pause there, because that's, that's kind of a big step.
Are there anything, are there any things on the horizon for next year that you already know about that would concern you about getting a one oh nine?
Well, I guess what Spencer O'Neal preservers, yes, and the end size has changed. I mean, they are our vulnerable populations, they tend to be the students for whom we, we need to target intervention in academic, more so than our students who are in our, you know, like, next, in upper levels, so that was the... Yeah, eliminating this, um, ELA one geometry test that Bob mentioned, because we, a lot of things are about those.
That, that, and just, that's kind of in flux right now. There's, you know, conversations happening, obviously we keep getting skew on that. As of today, not so much gonna tell me different, because they're still in place.
As of today, they're still in place.
The, the, what I understand is there's kind of an argument on how they align with federal requirements and some conversations there, um, that are playing itself up.
And remind me too, so we have 23 or 24 indicators, which one do we do?
A through M.
Which, which is difficult because of the small population. Is there consensus that this goal doesn't in any way cause us to do things that aren't in the best interest of students?
I think if you were to respond to me, if you were to see that number grow every single year, you would put the district in a position where we start to consider things that maybe we wouldn't do or consider best for children.
So this one doesn't do that, that you feel comfortable?
I don't believe, I don't believe that it does. I believe that we've done a lot of work in the last few years, putting structures in place to improve the statistics achievement, uh, measures. I think what we do is good for kids, and I think if we go too much further, we cross that line. That's as covered as one as I can be.
I don't think we've ever talked about, you know, wanting to do anything that's not in the best interest of kids, just to, you know, give a point or two. The only other thing I see sometimes we get pushback from the community on is if we go from like three to 10, that, that might, a big drop might be perceived as what's going on, is there something going on? Um, but it sounds like getting an A puts us in the top.
Maybe you've got 30 schools that received an A, and again, if you actually go then to the number, again, this is based on this year's data, I think it's around seven is what I looked up, so we'd be in the top 10 in Ohio.
But, but I mean, three to 10 is not a big drop, that is a tiny drop.
No, right.
That's the message I'm getting.
Yeah, you're talking about things.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so there's 30 in the state, what if we went from three to 30? Would, would that be perceived, would that be something that would concern you? It might be something that's certainly, the community might say, what's gonna happen?
It, it would, it's tough for me to answer, there's so many components there, right? So if there was a driving force or, or something that, that brought me concern, I'm not articulated shared, we haven't identified.
The performance index is a really great way to measure, meaning the indicators and making sure that such a large percentage of our students are proficient or, um, that I, I personally feel very good about a goal of trying to be all of our indicators, because it stands so many grade levels, so many content areas. Um, I think in an effort to increase PI, we could play the game of, like, for instance, having our students in AP Gov or AP American History, also taking the state tests as well, as some other districts do. Um, but we've chosen that that's not in the best interest of our students, so I think it is, it's that tough decision at the fine line of, you know, to what extent, like, by having our students in advanced math taking above grade level tests, it actually is better for them, because it's assessing them on what they're learning. Um, whereas taking a second test just for the sake of us taking your scores, um, doesn't mean we don't really care for that.
Take Bob's points, right? We have structures in place that support our ability to maintain and improve on where we are. I think that if we start missing multiple indicators, that's an indication that these structures have flaws in them. But the improvement has been based on the fact that these structures have been built and are now in place. So as long as we continue that work and refinement and measuring how that's impacted is, I think it's realistic to say minimally where we are. Now, what the state does with the calculations is out of our control, but like breakfast at, we're meeting all those proficiency indicators and all the components, um...
I think, do you find though, from like, to me, I'm, I think the school does a good job for the students, what makes it harder to do it all, that's what makes it much harder for the teacher? Do you find any issues with teachers maybe retiring early or quitting because of all the additional work they need to do for us?
Well, I, I think I've talked to you, you know, before about, you know, for me to tell you, I was a high school principal, you know, 10 years ago, isn't really relevant to what the high school principalship is today, it's different. Same thing for teaching, you know, there's a whole other set of requirements on that, if you just remove the evaluation system. Uh, there's no question, this work that we've talked about, the systems that we've put in place, they're having output, they have, you know, they have time and commitment and energy and hold on the later for staff, you know, we understand that, and it's, it's, it's certainly a balance and time is the, kind of the commodity we talk about, you know, constantly, is how do we make more time to do the right work, that's not overbearing and overwhelming? Because I, you know, honestly, we're all on that, that edge, you know, in this profession. But I think systems in place, the more you utilize those systems, the more efficient you become, the more you don't change from start to mat, to already, you know, stick with the system, and start to understand it better, will become more efficient, and hopefully that buys more time, uh, for, for staff.
I think too, Barb and I really feel our role is first and foremost to support the teachers, so going in there and, you know, giving another eye with their data and helping them do something. So we're, that's our number one role, to be in the classrooms and helping the teachers and try to lessen that load, and, and really look at it from a, of, given the lines that they might not have time to look at and to follow up their requirements.
So goal one has to do with curriculum review and refinement, you see this every year, because we have a curriculum cycle, um, that we operate, so that we're not reviewing all content areas all at the same time. Um, so this is the year of K-12 ELA, English Language Arts and Social Studies. Um, so we're kicking it off with a needs assessment, where we do a gap analysis, meeting with every grade level, um, of teachers, um, at the, for ELA, all of our, um, high school teachers, and having them work with us to create, kind of look at all of the current standards that match their course, and the current resources we have, and help to identify where our weaknesses are in the resources or the training that we have. Um, also looking at the level of learning, the DOA level that we're expecting, the cognitive demands of students, um, when we are teaching those lessons, um, to kind of guide us as to what we need in new programs. Same thing with social studies, and meeting with, um, a representative group in K-3 and all of our 412 social studies teachers to do that same work as well. Um, so that will lead into hopefully identification of resources, training that is needed. Hopefully, we can come back to the board in, um, early second semester with proposals for new programs, um, to be adopted, so that we can begin any training that's associated with those programs, and really, um, especially in ELA, grow from the existing successes that we have, and curate that on, so we have a very systemic approach in ELA. Um, so ELA includes, um, our reading, our writing, um, and our phonics programs, our writing also we're picking up, because we understand that there is a new house bill with writing expectations in K-1, 2, and 3, so we're working on that right alongside that. Um, following that work, we will refine our curriculum maps and make sure that those are posted to the district website alongside our math and science ones that are already there. And then following that work is development of common assessments that would, um, match up with those maps. Social studies seems like a content area where there's an opportunity to detail anything we do in writing, too, so that it's not just all falling into English Language Arts, that our social studies classes are as much about writing as they are about social studies. Is that something that you will be able to take a look at, since you're looking at both of them? It's great that you said that, because our speaker that we've identified on, uh, October 10th, that's coming to us from Penn State in his meeting with the K-12 ELA teachers, um, he's kind of kicking off just what would it look like if we had the perfect K-12 ELA program? But really, we know already that identifying common language, common strategies, approaches to things across K-12, first starting with our ELA teachers, but then taking those practices, and Katie's gonna be super important as we move into year two, after we've made decisions this year, in pushing that work into social studies, into our science classes, because it is super important. Dr. Benz that's coming October 10th, he is an expert in comprehension, um, he's taught in grades four through 12, but has experience with K-3 as well. Um, so I think that's gonna be very impactful, uh, because comprehension is such an important part of reading, and especially in upper level science, social studies, you name it, course is. So absolutely.
And I, you know, I, I would be, um, I think it's important to point out, ELA is a heavy lift. In every three, one is a lot of work, but ELA, the heavy lift is head lift for the teachers, and...
You're a little biased, I know.
I am, totally. And, you know, there are some really difficult philosophical conversations that need to happen as well, and, you know, back to curriculum and instruction, that whole instructional size continuity, and how we approach this, um, is, is probably the most important thing when you look at this adoption. So when we, we talk about this or present it back to the board, that continuity across K-12, and, and what it looks like instructionally, is gonna be at least what I'm looking for in terms of recommendations for improving the goal.
Any other questions?
So goal two, um, reflects our work in grading practices. You probably remember our goal last year was kind of revolving around our district leadership team and unpacking grading practices, which culminated at the end of the year with Myron Dewitt coming to district, and it kind of kicked off our systemic approach to looking at grading practices. All of our, uh, teachers were given, um, a copy of Grading Smarter, Not Harder, Myron Dewitt's book, and started reading that over the summer, and they're unpacking it at the building leadership team level this school year, throughout the school year. So we're kind of taking the work from the DLT and tripling it down to the buildings through the BLTs, um, which is very nice. We've identified two topics that are, um, kind of really big hitters, but, um, we felt like they were good ones to start with, homework and retesting across the board. Um, and so we're kind of working through that, and it's nice to have our DLT meetings so that representatives from the BLTs are coming back up and sharing their work across the district.
How are you incorporating, um, outreach to parents about the changes?
I think that we are at a place right now of just identifying where changes need to happen. Um, that will be something at the building level that will certainly, um, will allow it, after we've identified what needs to be changed. I don't know, consult if you want to add anything to that.
We're still really at that early stages right now, with philosophy's vision, and how does it look in K-12? What does this mean for you, and how does this impact that, so we're still there, all these things?
It can be a loaded thing for parents and students to adopt the change. And so I think thinking about that and how, uh, getting ahead of it with the parents and the students, and helping them to understand how the change benefits them, will be really, really important. I know before I was on school board, there was some pretty upset people here when we adopted grading changes at the high school and things like that, so.
And people are very sensitive about grading practices, so kind of working through that.
Yeah.
Myron's, uh, book, I don't know if people have read it, but it's very, um, user-friendly and unpacks things in a way that everyone can understand. Um, so I think, I think it's, it's gonna be good work. We also have some shiny examples in each of our buildings of practices that he talks about in the book, so I think it's more so looking inside of our schools and growing the great practices rather than throwing everything out the window and starting over.
We've talked about this before, but I should have said it when you were on your last slide, if at some point you feel that you would benefit from having some parent involvement along the way, I mean, it does help get more people out there, when people are saying things that drop off or whatever, it helps to have someone on. I was on the curriculum committee and actually looked at that, and this is why. And that's what we all do, um, for you as board members, but I know that we could find parents that would be involved in helping, you know, these sounding boards for this process as well.
I think I wanna just recognize this, this ends and Dr. Jones are gonna be, um, leading or helping this conversation from a district leadership team perspective, so they're taking on that role, and hopefully that work in those conversations then, um, kind of follow and find their way back through building leadership teams. I appreciate the leadership and help of this goal as well.
Did I ask at a high level, do we think that, I mean, you may not know where it's going yet, but generally, are we trying to, you know, bring things more in line where not everybody's getting As, or is it, you know, can you give me a general sense, that I, that's where I think we're gonna get?
My sense is that overall, we're kind of driven by the growth mindset, um, and really trying to create a place, um, even when we had Daniel Foyle several years ago come to district, where he kept talking about, you could just have met or not yet, and those are the two grades, where if you create an environment where every student feels like they can find success, it might not be all at the same time, but if we can create that environment, that's what a killer, what a relief is all about.[1773.84]
And, you know, I would dot that question completely because honestly, we need to have the right conversations and where this go is going to be a result of that. I mean, for one person to say, here's what I believe, you know, in theory.
You're just not there yet.
We're just not there yet. So I think what's going to happen is some of those tough conversations and we're, you know, even our first students, we even started to identify gaps and building, building philosophy of homework and just trying to maybe develop some continuity in those philosophies and then, okay, let's talk about the practice. And what does that mean? And that's where the parent comes in and the student comes in and we need to kind of play through that.
Do you see colleges changing their approach? Like how would they, would want to see like how it can get them? Like is that changing too? Like for example, if they want to see if they have four-point pride, are they going to want to see something other than that? Do you see that change?
Well, grade point averages, so many of the schools are wiping away weight in grades to begin with. There's so many colleges now too that are saying they're not going to count ACT or SAT.
Right, all those optional schools.
So what are they, do you know what they're counting? Is there like a movement changing or what are we going to look at?
So they report that they're looking at the student holistically. What that means, we can, you know, take our best guess, is the combination of rigor of coursework, performance on assessments, all those other things that our students are involved with, leadership opportunities and so forth. It'll be interesting to watch as, you know, the K-12 system, because you see it in best practices, you see schools having these same conversations. So as these K-12 systems grapple with this, make decisions, how that post-secondary institution is going to respond to it. And I mean, there's just little bits in the literature now, you find certain schools that are starting to kind of look at that, colleges that maybe aren't assigning As and Bs. But it'll be interesting to watch at, you know, both systems where they, we got, if they do.
Are there any public districts that we?
We're talking about, you know, where we're at today and standard-based or competency-based at the secondary level, that's a complete 180. We're a long way from probably having that conversation.
To me, the point of the grade or the point of that is it represents something even to the outside world. So if they're changing, sometimes you change to it. Just wanted to try that.
I do not describe university as the most progressive.
Right, right. Well, I think, yeah, Greg, it has a way of hitting it right on the head. Obviously, we may do what's right for kids, or it's right to motivate them, but if we change, we make changes, it can impact getting into schools and colleges for seeing our kids, and that brings everybody stressed out. So you guys know all of that and we'll continue this conversation as we figure out what's right for the kid.
But you advise a part of doing your homework.
That's why I want to bring it back. To say we're going to take on, you know, grading and assessment and evaluation and, you know, standard-based reporting and competency, those are years in the making. We're focusing on homework.
And Rachel and Leila.
Came high on.
I'm usually the one who's out here. I need to come back.
Looking something else, right?
I was just going to mention Leila and Rachel led our last DLT meeting and quite a few different activities, which were really like helpful. We had some really great discussions overall just about homework and purpose behind homework, everything you could imagine related to homework. So it's good, it's going to be good work. We have a lot to work through, but it's going to be good work for sure.
Rachel and Leila?
Yeah.
Good luck.
And retesting.
So we spent a lot of time at the board level talking about strategic planning. I will say, take a look at that goal, it's been modified a little bit in the last week and a half or so. We're looking on incorporating, kind of building off of the original development of belief statements and competencies, some culture work with administrators in the spring that rolled back down to staff coming into the next year about these belief statements so you can see them in action. So take a look at that goal, getting specific questions to my modifications that have been made. Amy Parker's actually done some work with, it's called Focus Three. So you'll see that built in. It's nice having her in district because we can just realize that resource from them and she can help facilitate some of that work. So I had a handout sent to you today to read and certainly asking the questions that you might want to leave. Two of you should have had an invitation for the first designing until her 18th maybe to kick this off. Okay.
Goal four is our students' first goal. So it's really the goal that talks about making sure our students are ready to learn, making sure that they have academic support, social emotional support to be the best that they can be when they walk into our classrooms. MTSS is a multi-tiered system of support. That's kind of the current verbiage in research that addresses social, emotional, and academic needs. It talks about that pyramid that you're familiar with in terms of providing tiers of supports and interventions where kids move fluidly up and down based on their identified needs. So what we're going to do this year with this goal is really target, trying to get some consistency across the district in terms of what services and supports do we have available to students, articulating them, articulating process of moving into and up and down the pyramid of supports because we have lots of bits and pieces of this within our district. But we want to make sure that we are consistently meeting students' needs as they move from building to building two. We can ensure that there's a support available at Kearney, there's a comparable support at the, nor maybe at school, so that we can service kids across the district. So when we think about the multi-tiered system of supports, we're going to look at an academic side. You may remember the acronym RTI. That's kind of the specific terminology for the academic side. And then that social, emotional side is kind of that PBIS, so those positive behavior interventions and supports. So I think it's exciting work because I think when we have this in place, then all those other goals happen a little bit more easily. We're on our way. We started at DLT last week, I guess, having the buildings start to inventory their MTSS systems. What do they already have in place? What are they using, both academically and socially-emotionally, so that we can start to identify where are our goals? Where do we need to build in those supports? We know that we want to increase our services and supports to students. So we've already, here tonight in Bob's recommendations, asked for your approval on contracts for a new mental health provider. I'm not going to call her that yet. We're a little unsure of the title, but she's a licensed professional clinical counselor to service our PK eight population. We have that position already in high school. So it'll allow us to provide a smaller type of service across the district. And then also to develop kind of a model of district-wide support for students and families through what's known as an I care team. And that work to be supported by a family support specialist. So that's the other contract that will be presented to you tonight. So both those people have been identified and are ready to start work and help us build our multi-tiered system of support.
Jen, so can I say that we're better at identifying students who need the academic support than we are the social, emotional?
Yeah, it's easier. I mean, it's really easy, you know, you can give I ready and you can get scores back. It's trickier on the social, emotional side, teachers can tell you.
Okay, so can you talk a little bit about how students would be identified?
Yeah, sure. So when we bring in these people like the LPCCs or our social worker at high school, we're really looking at for those people to target kind of those tier two and tier three kids. Those kids for whom they need more than what we provide to other students. So they might need more interactions or in a small group with a guidance counselor working on social skills or peer relationships or conflict resolution. So the way we're going to identify those students is we're going to start with our systems that are already in place. So our TDTs that already meet and address student concerns. We're going to look at teacher referrals when we know that academics are struggling because of a social, emotional problem. There are universal screeners out there that will screen for emotional concerns. I don't, I'm not there yet because with that can come a whole host of other issues, but it's something that I think internally as a team, we're going to talk about, you know, how do we catch the concerns that may not be evident? Because I think we definitely have those. You know, we have a lot of kids who mask what's going on when they walk through our doors.
Right. And maybe define academically from now.
Right.
So like if a student was diagnosed with social anxiety, would that be something that now would put them into this system? If that would be brought to the attention of the principal or?
I think it's important to kind of understand where the school's role falls with mental health services. You know, anyone we bring in for a multitude of reasons, we're not looking at developing a long-term psychotherapeutic relationship. We're just not, that's not our business. Our business isn't educating, but we know we have to address these needs. So we're really looking at these people to kind of play the role of psychoeducation, a kind of a real solution-focused orientation. So if you have a student with social anxiety who is having a very difficult time working in groups in a classroom, what tools, how can we build their toolbox and give them strategies to help cope so that they can benefit from that academic experience? These people also will be a good kind of transition to resources to the point where when we can look at the data and say, oh, this is getting beyond the scope of what we can handle, either intensity or frequency of supports, then these people will be in a position to help connect with outside resources, human resources.
And goal five is the self-paced learning goal that Maydority shared with you a little bit during last week's meeting when Monica and Mike presented to you. This goal includes me and Leila DeSenta as well. We, our work really this year is to do research, is to all of the self-paced learning examples that are out there and really helping to kind of look at what's working related to self-paced learning at the middle school and high school level currently within our district and seeking to possibly grow those options, but also looking at what would be the purpose or what would be the multiple purposes behind creating self-paced learning? And is it just one option? Is it several options? And really kind of coming up with a plan for implementation. So we're hopeful that through site visits and our research this year, and we've already assembled and met with our committee of teachers across seven, 12, that we will come back to with a recommendation by June of next year for movement forward. So we're excited about the work. It's already been a great first meeting. We're looking forward to it next one next week.
This is one that we have, there are quite a few parents that have gone with it to see, give some feedback, people.
Any questions? Any general questions?
Just want to say before I forget, I really want to commend everyone in this room on all the work that was presented tonight. And I especially want to commend the two of you, Mrs. Quinn, you weren't responsible for a lot of what you presented just a few short weeks ago. And Mrs. Fango wasn't even in the role a few short weeks ago. So everybody is clearly up to speed and doing a great job. Just fantastic.
All right. So if there's any further questions, I'm going to let the administrative team celebrate this evening and dismiss them. And I appreciate you all being here tonight. Thank you for your work. And now you're going to escape. If you want to draw your attention, I'll give you a handout. I'll send this to you electronically as well during, I'm holding it further. We are going to, on October 2nd, have a special meeting where we talk less to change the data. And we had an interest in kind of providing the board with an update on student achievement data throughout the course of the year. So rather than one time, here's a state report card, here's your SAT, or if you're going to give you kind of, you know, three times a year as we do benchmarks, kind of an update on how we see growth performance academically. So the conversation really is going to have two components. You know, what types of things do you want to see on a regular basis and monitor going forward? And we can kind of create a scorecard, if you will. And then, you know, relevant to tonight's presentation about, you know, annually, you know, what is, what is that academic target we're going to strive for? So I don't give you this as a done document at all. I just gave you some things that in my mind, if you may want to consider that you look at annually. And then I wanted to share some data. I read a data that if I was doing part number one, this is, this is year seeing students in this report, grades one through eight and reading a map on their first benchmark, on the last two pages. And what, what you can see that looks different next time is you would see how many of those students grew, you know, what, you know, what is the impact of instructions and interventions we have on those kids? So it keeps you kind of a high-level way of kind of monitoring student achievement as we go through. It's a little more difficult at the high school, quite honestly. One of the things you'll see in Monica's goal, she's doing some more pre-comm academy, there's some assessments you can take to pre-comm on the math side. So there may be some things there. I don't have that answer right now, but it is something that we're talking about internally that may be added on to this. So not a finished document, something for you to review, consider, and maybe bring to next meeting and help guide us in our conversations.
Do I have one more question?
Sure.
For the progress in the gap closing, by the way, you and I are on the same page about it. Can you just add four little sections and give us also the, at the building level, progress in gap closing?
Sure.
That would be helpful.
If I have a question.
Thank you. So, As, then we'll get at the building.
Well, it's actually not building level that I want, sorry. It's the.
Oh, the different strands.
The different strands, yeah. Those 20% and then 50%.
Strands, sorry, in subgroups.
Yeah.
And if there are things you know of that you have an interest in, that I can gather for you or bring to you, shoot you the information, just if you have questions leading up to the meeting. Okay, do you want to talk pretty much on going down? Do you want to do another other business?
Why don't you do it now? It seems like a goal roll.
Okay. Standard, me. Okay. So Bob, I've kind of been tossing this around for a while now. We were presented the idea to combine, not just a financial goal, not just an academic goal, but kind of combine where we're going. There's just supporting docs that we're going to talk about. More in our performance goals, not necessarily just district goal, but more for us to guide our work. And as we sat and talked about it, you know, we would say, okay, let's think about this and then, you know, come back a few days later and let's talk again. And then we would say, oh, but this. And so we kind of, I think we've kind of gone in several different directions here. So then we were provided the example that I believe the board liked from New Albany, which is in these supporting documents. And we both kind of had, I think, I won't speak for Bob, but I think we kind of had some similar concerns with just taking that and using that.
Which was never the intention.
Right.
No, and it was not a full board discussion. That may have come from a board member.
Let me back a little bit because you guys may not even remember. So when we were hiring a treasurer, Becky and Chris, I think Becky brought it up, that in New Albany, they've had very successful results with combining an academic achievement goal with a financial goal. The idea being that you're looking to maintain academic excellence, but also look for cost efficiencies. And so you're forced to look at return on investment. You know, what do we absolutely need to keep doing because it's really making a difference for students academically? And what things maybe aren't making that much of difference, not mandated, maybe consider, you know, letting go of. So theoretically, we did decide as a board, when we did that performance evaluation, that we would recommend that that be one of the goals for the administrators. So then just as an example, here's how New Albany did it, just as an idea, but literally leaving it to the both of you to decide how it works in our district.
So in looking at this, a lot of it, reading the statements that the treasurer wrote, I have a real issue with some of the things she wrote. I mean, as an accountant, you know, I am nowhere near qualified to tell Bob what programs need. So, you know, and some of these things where it was, you know, she, it looks like it's written by the treasurer, maybe it's written by the team of the two of them. That would make more sense.
The way she expressed it to me was that it was a joint goal.
Okay.
And so both elements need to be achieved. And that way, that push and pull becomes productive.
Absolutely. Because, yeah, it'd be really easy for me if you basically said, Ash, and I want to cut 5% out, for me to go to Bob and say, I'm sorry, you just lost 10 teachers. You know, I mean, yeah. And that certainly, you know, guides us as treasurers too. You know, we don't just look at the dollars, contrary to popular belief. We do understand that, you know, every decision that we make does impact the classroom. So we also kind of. So we also kind of started the conversation at a, at one of the board prep meetings about putting on an agenda in October to discuss how the next meeting year, we'll be discussing how do we measure ourselves academically? The meeting after that, we'll be discussing how we measure ourselves financially.
Right.
So putting something in writing and telling you this is our goal, when I don't really know what's important to us yet, is a little bit difficult. And because the forecast isn't done, and I haven't really, you know, delved into those numbers. So what I did put together for you is the white graphs or charts here, that's what we put together, or really bonded most of the work, I'm not going to take credit for it. When the joint financial goal was first presented to him, this is, this is kind of what he, what he put together originally.
And let me give, give some context. I thought this came out of my, my evaluation review and the discussion with the board on grading a list, bringing to the board, having conversations around prioritizing it as, as kind of the desired outcome for this year. This is just not better words, it's just different. So trying to assess where, which direction the board wants to go. If you, if you want a hard number to hit, or attempt to hit, my thinking, we have to let Ashley vet out the fiber forecast, hit it to a place she's comfortable with it, so we have a good starting point as, as a first step. And then probably need to have some dialogue around total expenditures, you know, idling total expenditures, know that 80, what's percentage, 82, 83% in our budget is locked, there's nothing we can do about it. So just understanding what the implication of that is, either we're going to go staffing programming, or we're going to try to cut into that other small sliver to get to that number. So we're all on the same page.
And I, I like, I think you sought clarification from us before about, you know, are we asking for an X percentage cut? And we said, no, we, I think we all agree, we like this idea of having a prioritized list of projects that you feel will not hamper the ability to get the A that's in your other academic achievement goal. That is really putting those two together is what I thought we were talking about. Where we have, you're not going to sacrifice the academic achievement goal for purposes of achieving this, and you're not going to sacrifice this for purposes of achieving. So you're putting them together as a joint goal. Does that help? I don't know if it's clearer that way.
Kind of an underlying assumption that things exist that shouldn't be there, that impact that, where my approach would be, just let me talk out loud. My approach would be, if I was, if I had to put in a position where we had to make reductions, where would I start that least impacted our ability to continue to offer programming to kids, achieve at the level, and kind of work down from there? And then value statements can be applied to those, to that list. I mean, we could have conversations about, you know, how important X is. And that list would include at some point, probably in programming to the board, at least we'd see the thinking about, okay, if we had to make tough decisions, these are some of the things that at least from Bob's perspective that would be there. But we think you have a real clear message around that, when we're talking about it, whatever our intent is, it's, it's making sure that we're being financially responsible every year, that we're really vetting everything that we have in place, that, that we're not necessarily implementing. And there may be some that we say, yeah, that makes total sense, let's, let's do that. Where I saw this as, you had a good number, just go ahead, which can be done, I mean, it can be done, but it's not, we know what our raises are, we know what 85% is, so if I'm going to make significant change, I'm going to be cutting something.
I think it's more to make sure that we're just continually challenging ourselves as a group, to have a conversation around exactly what you just laid out, which is, I could, I, you know, if, if forced to make some level of cuts, here's what I would come to the board, and here is how I think it would impact our students. Because the opportunity to then first is for the board to say, no, actually, our community expects that we offer those things or maintain that level of academics, or, and so we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to see that cost savings, it's too great a trade-off for us. And just to make sure that we're really challenging ourselves around those conversations.
Right. And, and, you know, I mean, day, what, two, I think Bob and I touched base and said, okay, we do need to sit, and there are some places that maybe, maybe there are, you know, some, some low-hanging fruit that we can, you know, we can take care of. In the time that I've been here, I haven't identified them.
I want to jump in. I'm concerned that we're rushing this. I don't think this is a goal for this year. I think, I think this goal needs to be spread out over this year and next year. I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, well, we'll get as good a result, this is Ashley's first year.
It may be, and I think we call it goes...
I guess, I mean, so I don't want a concrete, I don't want an answer by the end of the year.
And Ashley, let me give you an example of what I, so like in some of the annual budgeting, you know, I was at a support group meeting at the end of the year, and they were talking about how they have to spend their budget, or they lose it for a year, because, right? So that's the kind of stuff where, to me, that's low-hanging fruit, where I'm like,
actually, you can give it back to the district.
And, and we're kind of, kind of addressed.
Yeah, there are things we do that we can put a number to, and you can say, well, I just...
Part of that is really addressing.
But, I mean, that's, this whole concept of return on investment, is just to really look at, what do we do, what are the results we're getting versus what it costs us? And get ahead of the game so that we are eliminating things that aren't giving us a higher return, so we can invest in other things that will give us a higher return. That's, that's the basic background, I think. And I think to say we're just going to be looking at a list that you would recommend is not too aggressive. And we're not saying we have to cut 1% or 10 percentage or something like that. So I don't, I don't think it's too overreaching.
Well, I know, but I mean, I also read, okay, we now, we have the transportation director looking at, we do see busing, what would it look like if we, if we had students instead of 45 minutes on the bus, 30 minutes on the bus? Well, of course, that means more buses and more bus drivers. So, which is the total opposite of...
But that's why we're not giving them a number to shoot for. It's not the total, I mean, of course, they'll be making decisions that will increase expenses alongside this conversation.
There's a first example, on that list, I would quantify for you. And you're right, some of this is going to take longer, I mean, but I would quantify it, go in statement on some transportation, show that to you. And maybe the statement, which you create your own, you know, about, you know, distance around this campus.
Which is a good conversation to have.
Yeah, that's something that could be on this list, and would be probably higher on the list, rather than, you know, cutting X programs.
Right. It doesn't touch the classroom.
So is the, ask for them to generate the list, go through X or generating the list, so we can see what it's like, is that your ask?
Well, actually, the board's ask direction, right, was, we'd like to see an academic achievement goal paired with a cost reduction goal in a way that they think makes sense. And so they brought to us, we'll bring you a list of possible things we could talk about cutting and how that might impact things, and if that would bring our expenses down.
The goal, you can generate the list. Go through the X. That's what they're proposing.
That's what I walked out of my evaluation here at the board. If that's changed, I just need to know that. I mean, I've heard it, I've seen this a couple of different times, and I've heard it, just want to make sure this is what you want, you want a cost reduction goal, which means that I'm going to implement cuts or changes to hit enough.
That is not what we're saying.
That's not the objective for this year. Yeah, this year, I think, is to figure out the roadmap, you know, and start to read the map, and to start to get there. I don't, I don't think we necessarily expect you to like parachute in there and find your way out this year, you know, in X amount of time. The goal this year is to figure it out, start to, start to have a roadmap.
And thinking about things that way. It's a different mindset of thinking about, you know, should we add this, this program? How many kids are going to benefit from it? You know, but it's just a different way of thinking about things, because money isn't unlimited.
I would challenge that we thought that way. And we don't, I don't bring conversations or recommendations about understanding the finances, but challenging the thinking of actual reducing is something to...
I don't, I, I know she wasn't suggesting that you haven't been thoughtful in that way all along. I think we all know that you have. I think we see the opportunity now with the treasurer, with a different skill set, to have some more financial backing to your thinking than maybe you've had exposure to in the past.
I think part of the challenge for us is going to be the way things have been coded and the practices that have been in place for, I would say, dozens of years by some of, you know, the secretaries and things, in the way, that mentality about, well, I lose my budget, I lose my money, first of all, it's not true. It's tax-free funny. But that whole, you know, budget for what you need, not just, you know, you don't, and, and this year's budget is to educate this year's kids. If at the end of the year, you have money left in your budget, great job, you know, awesome. But you don't just go spend it, because that's going to benefit the next year's kids, that should be on next year's budget.
Ashley, understanding that, you know, part of what prompted us, almost every treasurer candidate we heard, talked about our growth and spending.